Good morning, Quapaw Nation. This is Michael here speaking. It's giving you a reminder that you need to speak into the mics. They are gated, so you have to speak within about one foot of them. If you do take questions from the audience and they do not take a wireless mic that we have up here, we can give to you, be sure to repeat the question or summarize it so the people at home or in future recordings can understand the context.
Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the rain. Lord, for those, everyone that came out today, Lord, and we just pray that you'll guide and direct each of our words, our actions toward and continue to work hard for our pride and all the decisions that are made and discussions that we have.
Hey, Mr. Barker, real call and declaration of quorum. Jeremy? Michelle? Zach?
Here.
Lloyd?
Here.
Hi, President Callie. Joseph?
Here. All right, we have a quorum, dropping down to the reading correction and approval of minutes and phone polls.
Make a motion.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hey, minutes and phone polls are approved. Approval or disapproval of treasurer's report?
Move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hey, treasurer's report is approved. Next, we have the approval and disapproval of the reports submitted. Both directors as well as subcommittee reports.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, the reports are approved. Dropping down to the director's reports. Ms. Carissa Millard for the Quapaw Nation Court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First, I want to start off with October, not October, April. We had two dockets that were held that month. The first docket had two criminal cases, one divorce, one civil. The 22nd docket included one divorce, two guardianships, one protective order, one adoption, and one civil. And so far, last month, there were two new attorneys that applied and had been accepted to the Bar Association. Currently, when I did this report, we had 52 active members and we recently just had, I think, two or three apply this week. And our office is always accepting applications. The application forms are all available on the Quapaw Nation website and we, with an updated list of attorneys. On April 17th, a new juror code was finalized and approved. We're going to be sending out letters and summons in the next few weeks, so be watching out for those. The court held a mock trial with the Quapaw Nation Youth Program, which was the Big Bad Wolf versus the Three Little Pigs. We had, I think, nine to 10 students that were involved, so it was kind of fun. We let them actually take all the roles, so everybody got to be a part of it. And they came back and said that the Big Bad Wolf was guilty. So, um, we also went over different roles in the quorum and what everybody does, what the language is, what jurors' roles are and why they're important, what the prosecutor does, what's the defense attorney does, judge, what I do when I'm up there. So it was kind of a nice learning experience that we did with Billy and her group of kids. So we're also, I forgot, we're also going to be doing two more mock trials when she has her Quapaw Nation Youth Camp during the summer. We're going to split them up into two groups. We're going to do, the younger kids will do a fairy tale mock trial, kind of like we did with the Big Bad Wolf. And the older kids, we're looking at doing a texting and driving trial. So that'll be interesting. Um, we continue to work with attorneys in person right now with filing email, fax, or regular mail. They can also send anything electronically to the court's email or to be directly. Effective April 26th, both of the judges sat down with us and kind of went over how they wanted to change the courtroom since the buildings were open and the mask mandate was down. Right now, masks are recommended, but of course, not mandatory. The gallery and audience area will have a limited seating of no more than 17 individuals because we only can hold 35 in there to begin with. So it is open to the public, but 17 at a time. All of our attorneys, court personnel, and litigants are allowed to go past the railing in the courtroom, but those are the only individuals that can go past that, or witnesses or anything like that. As of now, January to April 30th, there have been 19 new cases filed in the court. This includes two child support, one civil, 10 criminal, three guardianships, and one deprived, which was transferred from the state, and two protective orders. There have been a total of new attorneys apply from April 1st, or I'm sorry, January 1st, April 30th, and that have all been accepted to the Bar Association. Since January, we've held seven dockets. The Juvenile Healing to Wellness Court is currently working on a policy and procedure for background checks for anyone that's going to work with juveniles. Through our grant and special conditions, we are required to do background checks on anybody that's going to be in the program and working with anybody that's a juvenile. We just finalized our internal MOUs. Those are going to be with the Counseling Services, Billy Bertram's program, Youth Program, Krista Pierce's Education Program. Our judges are also on there, and we did one with the marshals as well. Over the last month, there's been one training that's been attended and that Sarah did virtually, which is understanding tribal use, substance use, and trends in considering community factors. And that is it. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Carissa? Um, I'm glad to hear that not only the moot court or the mock trial was a success, but we're going to continue to do that in the future. I think that's a wonderful program, good exposure for all of the youth. I understand some congratulations are in order for you on a personal level, graduating with your masters this coming week.
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Congratulations on your achievement.
And also with the mock trial, we are going to be setting it up with the Quapaw Schools. We were going to do it last year, but COVID, of course, hit. So we're going to be bringing the fifth grade classes over and also doing it with them. And then we're looking at maybe doing something with the middle school and high school. So we can also bring in the school kind of as a field trip to bring them over to see the court, the building, and how it kind of works, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And what are you getting your masters in?
Native American law.
Right on. We need more of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, from the Housing Department, Mr. Tom Stell. Uh, can you give us an update, if you have it there in front of you, on available housing, elder housing specifically? Last I checked, there were still some availability.
Elder housing, we have two one-bedrooms.
Oh, I'm being told they may not have heard what you said because it wasn't in the microphone.
Um, will you tap the mic for me and see if it's working?
Hello?
There we go.
Any other questions for Tom? All right, good report. Thank you. Next up, from our IT department, we have Michael Richardson.
Morning.
Morning.
So we officially finished the QCS software changeover to Smart. We've been working on security projects, body cams, in-car cameras, Laserfish, Bolt. So we've been really busy with a bunch of projects. Uh, I have hired two new people, two new techs, Colin Kendall and Devin Barr. Colin's not started yet, we're still waiting for his pre-employment stuff to come back. So I'm really happy about that. So that way, we can answer our users a little faster than what we do right now because of all the big projects we're on. Uh, the new Marshals building, we're about 50% done with it. Um, we're waiting for the flooring guys to finish in our IT closet so we can get in there and punch down the rest of it, and then we'll move all the equipment over. Um, we need to upgrade our data center software. Um, that will happen on the weekend because we don't want to affect day-to-day stuff. So hopefully, that goes well. I'm not going to promise anything because it is computers. We're looking at our storage. We probably need to start planning on expanding the storage here. Um, we're growing. I think just last month, we grew about 4% on our storage, which is really big, I mean, for our organization. Uh, that's a good number to grow by. But besides that, everything's been going day-to-day.
Any questions? I did have a question of clarity for, there is a request later in the agenda for surveillance system for Quapaw Schools. Um, you're not going to be involved with that at all, are you?
No.
So maintenance, backup, support?
That's on them. That's on their security vendor.
Okay.
We do, they do call us and ask our advice on technology down there, and we will give that to them. Um, like, hey, you guys probably need to look at this system, not this system. We do that for them, but no support.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. All right, good report. Thank you, sir. From our Realty, Mr. Trenton Stand. Man with the plan.
Morning. Well, as pretty much every month is for Realty, we are busy. Landowners, it's been kind of interesting this past month. We have, uh, landowners we've been assisting that have multiple types of interest. Um, so we've been trying to help them out with their fee property, same properties that they have restricted interest in. So, um, for the ones that have responded, I've always offered people that if you have fee interest in property that's restricted, and you're willing to have that, want to have that put back in trust, we can do that on a mandatory type acquisition. I've never done it for an individual, so it kind of, I wanted to see what the Bureau thought when we brought one of those over. So we've been working on a couple of those, of course, that's going back to chain of title, but it's what we're having to complete right now. So that'll be interesting in the next couple of months to see, as long as those are valid interests because at times, county seems to tax things sometimes they're not supposed to or, you know, things are created erroneously. So, um, the conveyances for individuals this month, they've slowed down a lot since we've kind of pushed through hundreds in the past couple of years. We've pretty much taken care of everybody that's desiring to sell. So now we're working on gift deed type conveyances from, you know, fathers and mothers to kids, things like that. Uh, within families, we're, uh, we're doing a, kind of a partition. We're dividing a tract of land amongst two separate siblings that are cousins. So we created the, we completed the first one of that. Um, that's been done in at least Eastern Oklahoma region. Nobody else has done one of these before under the new A and D module in TAMS. Now, TAMS has been a whole nother creature since COVID has started. Um, it's, part of it's been a good thing. Um, we've gone 100% paperless with the Bureau, but that's created, um, issues, tweaks, little glitches here and there. People can see things others can't. Um, growing pains in regards to that, that we're working out. And I think we're pretty much past all the headaches of that transition. But we're also, the Bureau's loosening up and allowing us to complete more of the approvals and we're checkmarks in TAMS for us to get done with projects. So those are speeding up. Um, we've, town lots, they've always been, are always an issue. Carissa, she actually sent out failure appeal notices to some of our people that didn't show up to court that owe us money. So eventually, we're going to get to a point where somebody's probably going to have a bench warrant. Let's make an example out of somebody because the fear of court is kind of getting smaller and smaller when nothing has really happened other than show up and pay us again. So we're working towards that goal of trying to put the fear back in some folks. Business, uh, business site leases for the month is fairly simple. We got a couple signed leases submitted and we're trying to get those pushed through to the approval status. We worked with the electric company, I don't know if you've seen them out here running. Um, a couple of weeks ago, they, the individual overseeing those, he's really good at calling me now instead of us having to run out there and say, hey, what are you guys doing? Um, fortunately, they had documents for all that, so it wasn't a trespass. There wasn't any issues. They were updating their line. That was the first time in almost 11 years that I've been here where a electric line in its entirety across us was covered. So that was kind of a nice surprise. Um, we only completed, submitted one agriculture lease last month. We are working towards setting up a plan for our lease bid sale that we have every year. Of course, we get our cattle company involved and things with that prior to setting up that date. Um, the rideaway project actually has one, it's on tribal feed land. I submitted the resolution and stuff for it today with ODOT over by the turnpike gate. Finally hashed out the appraisal and they got us that back. And, um, I think Steve corrected all the name issues on the documents that were incorrect that was sent over to us, so. So those, uh, that's being proposed today, so I can, at that time, answer any questions when you guys get to that, if you have any. EPA, um, we've completed our third round of chat sales on a bird dog pile, um, which the tribe's involved with as an owner. That's, it was a central mill at one time, so what, you know, you get to grade and there's still chat there. Um, that's kind of unprocessed, untouched, what everybody wants to see, bigger chunks. So they keep, you know, they just keep pulling it out. So processors are comfortable with a set amount of tonnage. So they'll say, hey, we'll get 30,000 more, however much they think's there, and they'll buy it. So we've done three rounds of those. Um, this probably will conclude it, I believe, because it's, they've done quite a bit and it's just going down, so I don't know how far they're going to keep chasing stuff. Probates, uh, we completed, initiated three new probate packets last month. And, uh, our handling and dispute, uh, kind of came to light through court processes. Um, they're wanting to look into interest and if it was conveyed properly, we've responded once, we're in communication with those people. We've, we, I had to respond last month to a review, Eastern Oklahoma region completed on the MIMI agency. It encompassed three of our leases. Basically, it was some pretty strong words in the, um, the review that we were violating regulation and federal law. But it wasn't a finding, it was an observation, so I didn't kind of really see how those went together. They were, but what had happened after I worked through it was they're reviewing files at the agency, not the original files at our office, and I spoke to that effect. When I responded to them, everything that they said they didn't have, it was in there. We did have, um, Caddexes, the environmental work for our leases and things like that. We did, on a, there was one residential lease. Um, they said we didn't handle the assignment correctly from one lessee to another. We did, the Bureau didn't feel like they needed to approve it because we met all the standards and regulation for them not to have to approve the assignment. However, the lease required superintendent to sign. So that was the only problem that I said, yeah, after looking back at it, superintendent, you should have signed this. Um, we sent it over that way, and that was the only issues with it. So there's really nothing at, at the end of the day that was a problem for us or for them. But we helped respond for them because they wasn't as familiar with our files as we are. So that's all I have for everyone today.
Questions for Trenton? Do have, I have a question. Um, I took a call from a tribal member over this past week and, um, she was voicing her, uh, not necessarily a concern, but just, I guess, more of a request for more information. Uh, she is a landholder, and from my understanding, she has different interests and several different parcels of land throughout our reservation. And I was curious, um, one, what we did, I mean, I've seen some of the, uh, letters that you send out on our chat sales and try to put as much information in there as you can. Do we have any other type of, um, program that we could utilize? Or at least some type of informational, uh, maybe on, on our website or something to that effect?
What, actually, part of the process for trying to do with Mikey and Laserfish is be able to create a way for them to request data from us through our website and then come to us and go, you know, somebody's wanting. Because what she's requesting, we usually get those about every month. Uh, somebody calls, um, or they inherit new interests, and so they don't know where anything's at. So we'll say, you know, we'll give you an ITI, which is an individual tribal interest report. It'll pull everything across the United States that you own this trust or restricted. From that, we'll give you aerials, um, maps showing you where your interests are. Kind of, there's a little cheat sheet to help you read the ITI if they're unfamiliar with it. And we give those to people, like I said, pretty much monthly. So whomever that is, feel free to have her call me, and we have a nice little packet we can send them.
Okay. Wonderful, wonderful. Because I, you know, I was thinking, I was putting myself in their shoes too, is like, if a person has been handling their family affairs for the last 20, 30 years, then they're familiar with some of the ins and outs of that, of that process. But if you've inherited something and you're new to the game, then yeah, I'm sure they have all kinds of questions that, and if we can help better answer that and provide them the information, that'd be great.
Right, yeah, and that even covers, usually, we put on there, you know, if that has an agriculture lease or a business site lease or anything related that seems to be, you know, something they would need to know. So yeah, feel free to send them to me anytime.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Good report. From our Family Services Department, Ms. Mandy DeMint.
Good morning.
Um, our department did receive a new grant recently that will help us, um, create and offer resources to do, um, our own DV docket, a docket that is just for domestic violence. And it will also allow us to do, like, to prosecute non-Indian offenders. So we're looking at working on that, and it also allows us to have a grant manager for our department, somebody to take care of all of our grants, um, so that will take some things off of our plate. Um, we did transfer two kids from state custody to tribal custody. That makes five Quapaw children in Quapaw Nation's custody and 32 Quapaw children in state custody. Um, I did approve one new foster home. Um, our Domestic Violence and Victims of Crime Department has 26 clients. They're doing some community-based outreach programs, um, in person and via Facebook because a lot of people don't realize that our department helps, um, not just Quapaw tribal members or even Native Americans, but every gender and every race. So we offer services to, I mean, basically, everyone who are victims of crime and domestic violence, but that's not really known to everyone. So we're trying to make sure that information gets out there. Um, our youth program is offering parenting classes, youth groups, and inter-tribal youth language classes. They're, um, offered through Facebook. Um, they're planning a youth summer camp that starts August 9th through August 13th, and that will be held at Five Mile. Um, the purpose of these programs is focused on mental health and suicide issues. They work to build self-esteem, mental health awareness, and they focus on cultural activities and cultural aspects. And they also do mentoring, and it's meant to kind of give the kids an outlet or someone to talk to if they have, um, you know, they're facing any issues as far as mental health, suicide, or just depression or any concerns they have. Really all I have.
Any questions for Ms. Mandy? Okay, no questions. Good report, thank you. Uh, next up from Roads and Construction, Ms. Terry Birch. Morning.
Morning. Questions as I go, you might stop me while we're on that topic. Lots of topics that will flow through pretty quick. All right, so the long-range transportation plan, the 20-year plan for the tribe on all the roads, the facilities adjacent to those roads. I'm still working on that and hope to have it within the next month. The IDIQ Engineering Consultant Position, I emailed you about yesterday. I'd like to put that out on the street. I don't have, or bids, uh, I don't have a dollar amount that that consultant position would be every month or for the next year because I see that being used for the engineering of the roads that are on your priority list. So those, that fee would be against each project. There may be, there may be some other fees involved with meetings or requests to consult on other future projects that we would bill back to the road fund. Uh, you have a copy of that RFQ in your packet. I just want to make sure, nobody said no, but I just want to make sure that that's okay, that I go ahead and put that out. The first project that I see them assisting on, that engineering firm assisting on, would be the Little Bridge, 8161, that we received the engineering grant money on. That would be our test run to see how that, that would work. And it'd be a task order under the consultant agreement, which is then negotiated. Each task order would be negotiated per project. Each project varies in scope. The prequal list, which has been a dream of mine for a few years, Jean Anne started within the last few months with me, and she's assisted me. So we're making that prequalification list like the, like ODOT has and like, um, other entities like the cities and the counties have of consultant or consultants, contractors, subcontractors, engineers, architects, of those people who have worked with us in the past. those people who have worked with us in the past, that we keep annually updating on our list to make sure that they want to do work for us so we can get those three bids per scope for any item that we put out. That's finally becoming a reality. The roads bid package modeled now after what the BIA does with, for other tribes and what the county does and what the states do, their professional bid package. When we put in a project out on the street for bid for a road project, and I get contacted and they say, send me the rest of this bid package, we now have a bid package that is on par with those other organizations. And they've, those other organizations have assisted me with examples that they've given me. And even our regional BIA office has reviewed it, and their engineer has reviewed it, and I've gotten feedback from them. So now when we put a road project out, we look like any of those other entities.
Good.
I got a lot of examples. I shut my office door for three weeks, and that's pretty much what I did. The bridge set aside, the 8161, this is the, the dream little project on the, between here and downstream. And we get that engineering consultant, as I said, that would be the first task order under that consultant agreement to design. And that's what that bridge set aside money is specifically for design. It wouldn't, it wouldn't mean constructing yet, but it would give us the opportunity to get that bridge up to par even for our EMS people within the next couple of years, hopefully. The administration parking lot, the construction was postponed on both the administration parking lot and the Marshals parking lots. The Marshall Services parking lot, which was formerly the substance abuse parking lot until the week after Pow Wow. So to that end, we put those out on the street. We held a mandatory prebid meeting so that we would know who was bidding and make sure that we can fulfill our procurement requirements for that project. We had Asbell Construction and Crossland Construction and Springfield Striping and CJW come to those meetings. Both of those meetings were held on the same day, one for this parking lot and one over there. Yesterday, I received an email from Asbell with that, with that packet that I said that we put together, the bid packet. In that packet is a draft contract. And the purpose of that was so they can see that contract that they're going to be agreeing to before they bid the project. So whenever we meet at QSA, the day that it's due on the 28th, those, those road packets are due. Then you can meet and you can determine when you open those bids of who you want to go with. And I can walk out of that meeting and we can have it contracted. I got to fill in their information on that contract and everything's transparent. And we can be moving dirt, you know, or at least in design within 14 days. A huge fast track compared to what we've done in the past. So that was the goal. But Asbell contacted us because they had their legal department look at that contract. And in that contract, per our new legal counsel, there's no limited waiver of immunity. And they took exception to that. And they, they said point blank in the email that they probably would not be able to bid that work if that's the contract that they have to sign. Now, I've emailed that back to Austin and asked him to look at the documents and to see, to get with you guys and see what else we could do. I doubt very seriously if Crossland would, would agree to that either. In all of Crossland's contracts over the last couple of years for vertical construction, we've offered a limited waiver by resolution to the dollar amount of those contracts. And that's a, we may not be able to get those parking lots done if we can't readdress that issue.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome. So there's, for the administration parking lot, the NEPA, I've applied for a CAT X for this existing parking lot. We've already got the, the TPO letter. I was approached or contacted this week from an archaeologist with the BIA who's pushing that now to the other tribes to make sure that they don't have any exceptions with this parking lot work. And we've agreed, and I've told the contractors in the prebid, that this, that they would need to stay on the existing, on the existing surface and that they are not to be down at the river or messing with anybody's camps or anything. So all of that area will be roped off and, and nobody off of the parking lot when they're doing that work, except for the areas where we're pushing the asphalt out on the existing gravel areas that people park. The Marshals parking lot isn't designed yet. The admin, this parking lot is designed. The Marshals parking lot isn't. So with that, with that bid packet, as we put it out, we're trying something new in that, we do design builds with construction all the time, with vertical construction, but I'm trying that this time with that small 100 by 100 parking lot. It should be an easy enough matter that the contractors have agreed. If we work through the contract issues, that they will have stamped drawings prior to moving any dirt. So there was, CJW was the engineer who showed up, who was at the prebid. It wasn't mandatory for engineers to be there, but they were. And we have put that out to quantities. When you open that bid on the, the 28th, those quantities may not end up being exactly what, what we do in the project, but they've been given quantities so that their bids, when you look at them, will be apples to apples. The Elder Center of Fitness Center parking lots, I believe you have that contract to approve today. It doesn't include the entire access road that you want that goes to Virginia. It just includes the existing gravel asphalt right now between the buildings. Intersection of 137 and 50, the four-way stop is approved. I talked to the county commissioner this week and asked him where those signs are. He said he's getting back on it.
Can we go back to the museum in Title VI Parking?
Yes, sir.
I was looking at the AIA, AIA. I believe it said 30 days substantial completion.
Don't make me lie to you.
Okay.
I'm going to take it, yes, that if you were reading it, that's what it said.
30 days substantial completion. I was just curious if you can guarantee that good to go before Pow Wow and General Counsel weekend.
That's the date on that, I think? Well, it's been, it's been out there for over a month now, pending signature. Those bids were received and that contract was done. It's just taken a while to get on the agenda. It, the work itself is just an overlay and re-striping. There's no reconstruct, reconstruction or anything there. It's just a point of getting into it when the, the buildings are closed. So there's nobody parked there. So it'll be weekend work. Couple, actually, one weekend and we should be able to knock it out.
Okay.
Bailey's Asphalt has done some other work for us in the past, and they're very, very easy to work with, very quiet when they show up and they're done and they're gone.
Okay.
The intersection of 66 Road and the C Store was pushed off to the first week of June because the concrete company, the concrete crew is coming from a different commission area. It's not our commissioner who's doing the work. It's another commissioner who's coming in with a crew. And again, it should only be about five days. I've talked with all the stakeholders on that intersection. And it'll go from the intersection of 666 and 69 Alternate, 130 feet to the east side of the concrete curb there at the C Store. Do it all in concrete, and we shouldn't have to touch it again in 20 years. There's no removal equipment. We're working with Michael Young. That's, that's vehicle-specific equipment. So he's got to identify three trucks. It doesn't have to stay on the trucks all the time, but we do need to have three trucks fitted for that equipment. So we're working with him to get those purchased. Maintenance did purchase the other two pieces of equipment that you approved last time. Okay, so that's roads. And then construction, the community building remodel, the sound insulation was put in above the kitchen. And we've received the check at this point for the, the sound blinds that we're going to try over the serving windows and see if that cuts out the ice maker machine, noise. The Marshals remodel, the floor's being installed, like Michael said earlier. It's looking amazing. I mean, they're really gonna, from the building where they're in now that we remodeled last time for them, this is actually a building that the nation should be able to be proud in going forward and, and having it visible to the community even. The Sally Port is up and should be, they should be done by, with this project by next month, which corresponds with when we can start the Marshals parking lot, right after Pow Wow. So the building, Crossland, should be off of that job by the end of this, by the, actually by the middle of this next month. We should be able to be punched out. That meeting was set now for the 26th of this month. So then we can discuss how Punch is going to work and we can do a tour. We can walk through the building and make sure prior to Punch that they have everything covered that you guys want. They're going to be working on the, the tearing out all the concrete in front of the building now and redoing that curb and the sidewalk for ADA access. And then that is the line that we draw from where we start the parking lot and go out. Emergency Operations Center, I talked with them yesterday in preparation for the meeting this next week for you, and in where design is and on the types of equipment. So ONG is not going to be able to have a gas line there probably for a year. They haven't sent me the easement paperwork yet. And that process does have to go through the BIA because it is going to be a main line that's ran across between the casino and the Quixote. So to that end, since we can't get gas there yet, but that's your end game, that's what you want. I've talked with the propane company and we're going to set a propane tank. And so all that mechanical equipment will be ran off of propane, including the generator, until the gas line is complete. And then I've talked with Brav, who can make the transfer of all the ports on the equipment at that time. So everything will be there. It'll just be the gas line that's not there yet, since it was a late decision. And the mechanic shop and picture, we do have the check to Liberty, and it's just a point of them setting their, setting that three-phase transformer to be able to plug everything in now. So all that's moving along is, it's slow, but it is moving. Then the admin signage, if you guys drive by the corner of the OLC up there, you can see in yellow paint where the, where the new sign base will be. It's about three foot cat a corner from the existing sign right now. And then the Pow Wow grounds of that you guys are going to be meeting. We've gotten all of the documentation that Chris has asked for from the existing stuff. So are there any questions?
You answered my question. All right. Thank you. Good report. Next up from our Kwapaw Nation Gaming Agency, Ms. Barbara Collier.
Morning.
Good morning.
You have our report. On the revocations and hearings. There is one update, the two show cause hearings that were scheduled for the first part of this month, been postponed. Moving on with those, those will be on the back burner until continue on with them. We're still recouping some of our staff. Our two new employees in compliance since we came back from COVID. There are, one was experienced and one was not. So they're in our compliance department downstream. The employee at us at downstream, there's now, they've been picking up some employees, as you know. Also in the furloughs. Now I have 792 employees. 111 of them are Native American and 48 of them are Kwapaw. Kwapaw Casino, they're remaining with the current staff. 102 employees, 34 Native Americans and 13 Kwapaw. And of course, that kind of slowed down also. This last year, we're just now recouping from that. We're also down as far as our licensing procedures are. Now have currently 251 licensed vendors, one with construction, one consultant, one on entertainment, 41 gaming vendors, gaming-related vendors, 233 non-gaming. IT Department. We have, we've got it and it's been in place. The office. And the compliance department is busy, especially downstream and getting their floor. New machines in and redoing some older ones. Redoing the floor, I'm taking out some of the things that are there. Some machines they don't have. Some changes and things like that. And then that keeps the IP mobility system that they have in place. Kind of been a way of working on the part of it from the National Internet Gaming Nation. And yes, again, part of the finalized the and the moving on. The all the information anything that comes through now. The all information, anything that comes through now.
Any questions for Barbara? No, good report. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head. Yes, um, I know we have one, one director, um, two directors. We, um, I can supply you with that information that's more succinct and and I don't want to just go off of what's in my head right now. But I think now I'd like to make the announcement that we just approved a policy there at the downstream where every tribal member who is an employee there has the opportunity to get a free tuition reimbursement. And the only thing that we request is a two-year commitment from those individuals. But they could, they can work as an employee at downstream and receive all of their schooling Thank you. But yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you some better information to you. Make that available for everyone.
We, as our department, we're not in favor of taking the player club cards. As well as the Oklahoma Casino. Entirely different regulations. Does not have the regulations that. Arkansas's regulations are much looser. Their IT database, IT want, want. All of these. We see not very much.
Yeah, to me, and I think the rest of us too, the, it's been a ongoing concern. Uh, and we are in the process of separating out the two. Thank you, Barbara. Hey, um, next, our chief financial officer, Mr. Eric Boone.
Morning.
Morning.
So our general fund in April, we had revenue of 4.2 million. Larger month than usual. We had included in that 4.2 million was about 1.7 million on a land sale at the Port Authority in Little Rock. That last, previous year, we had sold half of it. This completed the remainder of that Port Authority. And so anyway, our revenue was 4.2 million in April. Our expenses were 1.75 in April. Our tribal member health benefit expense was 492,000, bringing our total for the year through seven months to $3 million. Uh, social services, um, April expenses were 177,000, bringing our total for the year to 1.4 million. And then in April, we just had $12,000 of education expenses. We're in between semesters. Expect May and June to be larger months with the summer semesters, people applying for the summer semester. So bring our total education for the year to 445,000. And our tribal enterprises distributed $750,000 to the general fund in April and bringing our total for the year to 2.8. All I have, do you have any questions?
No. Good report.
Hey, uh, dropping down to new business, um, making, we want to make the announcement that the annual Quapaw Nation Memorial Dinner will be May 22nd. So be sure to put that on your calendars, May 22nd, uh, for the memorial dinner. Um, for the purchase requests, the first request, uh, we have from the roads program. And it is a request in the amount of $6,500 and it's going to come out of the road maintenance fund. And this is to fix the cracks, resurface, reseal and stripe the parking lots for the fitness center, uh, museum, Title VI building and across the road, access road, not across the road, most of the access road between the buildings. So.
I will make a motion to accept.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion, uh, to accept the bid and approve the request.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like clarification.
Okay.
Because the bid does not include resurfacing. It only says two coats of green and seal. Mr. Terry to say it would be an overlay. Bid does not include that. Distinct difference between overlay and reseal.
So to clarify, it's a reseal.
Resurface.
Not resurface, okay.
But all of the bids were apples to apples, correct? Okay, thank you.
Uh, so with that clarification, uh, and the promise that it's going to be done and not ongoing during general council and Powhaw weekend, um, any other discussion?
Question.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, uh, the request is approved, motion carries. Uh, next up is a request from the environmental department that is to purchase, uh, a 2022 Ford F-250. And from my understanding, there were also, uh, three bids that were taken. And this is, uh, the lowest cost between those. And the amount is for $37,313.64. And this is a, you know, a truck that's going to help, uh, with all of their towing of their recycling container, or their recycling trailers. And paid for out of state funds.
I will make the, uh, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the request as well as a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, uh, the motion carries and the purchase is approved. Uh, next up, we have our law marshals requesting, um, in the amount of $57,085, uh, to be paid out of the school violence prevention program. And this is to purchase security cameras for the Quapaw Schools facility. And the vendor that was selected was Touch Ton Electric and Arms.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the request is approved. Uh, an additional request from the law marshals is the purchase of security cameras for Quapaw School buses, uh, which is also funded through the, uh, School Violence Prevention Program grant. And this is in the amount of $18,738. And this vendor, uh, is REI. We have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and the, um, cameras for the buses are approved. Next up in our resolutions, um, let's see, Guy, you want to take that one, please?
We have resolution 051521A, authorizing the closing of two bank accounts, the Peoples' Bank of Seneca. We've reorganized how we're banking, um, Eagle Creek Golf Course. We've shifted the expenses over, uh, to downstream as they utilize it as a, as a, an amenity for the resort. In the past, the, the golf course had been on the tribe's balance sheet. We didn't really like it. There was, there was no rationale to how any of that was organized and so we've cleaned it up. This is just a housekeeping issue, so.
Okay. Move to approve.
Uh, we have a motion to approve the resolution. We also have a second. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the resolution is adopted. Uh, Michelle, will you take that next one? Motion? All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Um, I would like to have just clarification on this. Um, I've read through it, I didn't see it, but this does not include the sign, correct? The sign can stay there.
Trenton, you mind shedding some light on this?
Just for the record.
The sign originally was included. Before we updated the appraisal, they took the sign out. And so then that was around, they was offering, I think, 82,000, something like that. Um, after got with Guy, we requested a new appraisal be conducted due to the timeframe since it was provided to us. And they have resubmitted that. That's this new number of 92,291,200. But it, yes, remove the sign completely out. We don't have to do anything with it. Bringing people into Casino.
Also, and this is just informational, do you know if they purchased the land across the road to expand it or just this side?
No, they.
This is also, just so everybody knows, this is the intersection, uh,
Turnpike Gate.
At the turnpike, 313, that light right there. They are wanting to expand it from two lanes to, I want to say, what was it, four to six lanes?
Well, I'm not sure the lanes, I think it was more to set a shoulder, um, due to the accidents and things that's occurred.
A lot of discussion, that's why I've got questions. So thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Uh, Lloyd, can you take that next one?
Resolution number 051521C, resolution authorizing the application through the US Fish and Wildlife Service for 50-year, 2021 Tribal Wildlife Grant Program.
Uh, we have a motion to adopt. And we have a second. Uh, any discussion? No discussion? You're good? Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, uh, the motion to adopt is approved. And next, going down into the donation requests, we have, uh, Ms. Carolyn Harkins from Miami First Assembly of God, uh, requesting a donation of $1,033.21 for a mission trip to the Dominican Republic from July 6th, uh, through July 12th of this year. And how the nation will be recognized is through public and social media recognition along with, uh, wearing, uh, tribal apparel on the trip.
Chairman, I would move to, uh, make $500 subject to the individual paying the balance at the time.
Okay, so basically paying the last 500. All right, uh, we have a motion and a second, uh, to pay the remaining 500, um, of, of what she's requested. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, I like, I like that idea, Henry, because where we have it now is it kind of tells what they're going to do. Uh, I think it would be great if we could have them come back and present as to what Yeah, I agree. There we go. Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor of approving the donation request signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Uh, the request for 500 to Ms. Harkins is approved. Hey, dropping down into open forum, um, there's, uh, several different announcements that I would like to make first. Every month, we, uh, look back and reflect on, uh, tribal members that we may have lost and have walked on. And, uh, since our last meeting, um, in April, uh, I'm going to read off some names and then I encourage anyone that has some names in the audience or on the, uh, the rest of the board, uh, to put those names forward. Uh, the names I have are Alice Allen, Earl Green, and Robert Whitebird. Any other names? Any other names?
We have a lifetime member of our community, John Scott. He was a part of our Title VI programs for a long time, a big member in our community, helped with our kids a lot with Christmas programs. He played Santa Claus for a lot of years for people, but they're having his services today at noon at the Ottawa Grounds. He had passed away some time ago due to COVID, and they're just now getting together to memorialize him today. So just wanted to pay my respects to him and his family.
Okay.
Somebody can make their way out there today at noon, they're having their service.
Good to know. Any other names, individuals, that we need to recognize? Okay, at this moment, I'll ask for a moment of silence. So the biggest thing that's being talked about and receiving several phone calls a day on this is the American Recovery Plan. It's, it is, as I'm sure most people have seen, there's been announcements that it's a twenty billion dollar package. And then there's all kinds of questions as to how the allocation and the dispersment methods are going to work. You know, we've, we've taken as best we can, we've looked at guidance, we've looked at several different entities that are putting forward all of this information as to how it's going to affect us and impact us as an individual tribe. So I'm just going to read off some of the things that I've gleaned from this, and if anybody has any additional information, feel free to chime in. But the distribution methodology is the first one billion of that twenty billion. So one billion is going to be spread across five hundred and seventy-four tribes, divided equally among those. And then the next twelve point three five billion is going to be based on a prorata basis of enrollment data. So those will go strictly off of the enrollment numbers that we have for our tribal citizenship. And those first two are going to be in the first round of payments. And then the second dispersment is supposed to come later in the year, this year, and that is in the amount of six point six five billion. And that is based on a prorata basis of tribal government employment. So it's directly related to the number of employees that we have. And as I said, we've begun the process of applying for these funds through the Treasury. And through some of this process, and I'll turn it over to Guy, because he's the one actually filling out the request and sending it through the Treasury portal. But through that, we also receive guidance on how the federal government is allocating and dispersing to us the eligible uses for these funds. And then, of course, technical assistance and support that we can receive from Treasury as well. And the first deadline for the payment request is May twenty-fourth. And as I said, Mr. Secretary of Treasury has already put in for that, so we're good there. This, based off of what I've read, is really going to help more in the long term. So taking into account all of the long-term effects that COVID-19 has had on our tribal government, our tribal people, and our communities. It goes to help things like the assistance to unemployed workers, assistance to households for food assistance, rent, mortgage, utility assistance, things of that nature. It was passed to address educational disparities within tribal communities. So programs for summer school, tutoring, after-school, those are, those are all things that we're looking at and looking at possibilities of funding as well. Of course, improvements to data or technology infrastructure. And then even tribal members who own small businesses, they're available and there's an option for funding for those, for those folks as well. Anybody experiencing financial hardship that owns their own business. And then, of course, housing in neighborhoods. So with that being said, the things that I'm seeing, or kind of the stars to really pay attention to, is that as tribal governments were encouraged to use these, use these payments to respond to the direct and immediate needs of households and businesses that were disproportionately and negatively impacted by the public health emergency. And then it's also in the, within the guidance, it says that tribal governments may consider and take guidance from the per-person amounts previously provided by the federal government. So look to being something similar to that, whatever the federal government did, I think they did like a, was it one thousand dollar check? It was like a fourteen hundred, and then a six hundred. There's, so there's been different amounts that we can go off of, and we'll be looking at those to consider every option. So that, that's really what I wanted to announce today. As I said, Guy, you put in for the request, if you have any additional information, be happy to hear from you.
I don't have a lot of color to add to it, I guess, other than definitely not wanting to take credit for it. Mr. Boone got our paperwork in, I just had to sign it. But we, we didn't waste any time on it, we certainly didn't want to play around with the deadline, we did it the very first day after it was announced. Treasury had kind of reached out to me and told me that we should get some specific guidance, even dollar amount figures, some idea of what we're looking at in terms of funding this coming week. There, as Chairman had mentioned, there's, there's been some guidance, it's been rather vague. So specifics are still to come. And then, at that point in time, we can start to use those guidelines to go ahead and formulate a plan moving forward. I think that there's going to be pretty significant strings attached to the funds that we're going to receive. I think that we're going to be required to spend at least, you know, certain percentages or portions on either education or administrative help. But I believe that there's going to be a significant tranche there to be able to do individual distributions to tribal members. So keep an eye out, should have something, some more clarification soon, and should be able to, I assume we're going to do something similar to what we've done in the past, being able to put together a form and verify mailing address, and then, and then move forward. So just keep an eye out. Thank you. So when I said vague, this is exactly what I'm talking about. So when I had a discussion with them, a prorata basis based upon either enrollment or number of employees, they didn't add a lot of clarification of that. I asked, you know, are we using census numbers, are we using individual tribal enrollment numbers? You know, what are we using as basis for that? I think that this program is, or at least this formula that is put together is probably more friendly towards your larger mega tribes. And those with very large population basis, I think that it, it will help. But I guess in order to clarify, I asked if it's going to include personnel, at least with our casino properties, and there was just nothing. So Eric may have gotten better information than I did, though.
So just, you know, from last year with the CARES Act money, takes time for the guidance to come out. We did submit tribal enrollment information last April, submitted employment information on each of the entities, and then a total submitted land base, acres involved with last April. So from what I've read, the data, whatever they decide to allocate it on, they're using it from what they received last April, is my understanding. But again, last April, CARES Act was passed, it took literally two months to really get, I mean, it was guidance after guidance after guidance, like every other week, they were sending out more information. So expect that same thing with this funding as well. It just takes time. We don't want to jump into something and get burned on the back end. Patience to, to make, we want to make sure we comply with whatever guidance and regulations they put on this money. This guy, you know, explained, there's going to be strings attached, there always is. We just want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
I think during the consultation process, too, a lot of tribes with larger land bases and smaller membership on their roles advocated for other methods to take into account. And the federal government made the decision that they use the term fair and equitable. It was fair and equitable to use citizenship numbers and then employee numbers as well. And based off of conversations I've had, out of ten chiefs, five of them think that they should be able to use the casino employees to up that tally, and then you get the other five that say, no, we don't want to do that, that's kind of taking a risk that they don't want to incur. So we'll definitely keep our finger on the pulse and, and do what's right and what's responsible.
Yes, just to add some information to it as well, we're going to start the process of reaching out to our local delegation with this second, I guess, round of funding coming later in June, based upon the number of employees. We are rather unusual in Indian country in the sense that our employee base had almost increased by thirty or forty percent since April of last year with opening the Saracen property in Arkansas. We brought on an additional eight hundred or so employees. So the formula is, is put together to use twenty nineteen figures, but that obviously doesn't really apply to us, we're a little bit different situation. So we're going to try to seek some exception, at least to that guideline, and, and we'll have some more information later.
Guy says we're unusual, I say we're unique. Before we just open it up, could I get Chair, Quapaw Chairman, real quick to give a report? Okay.
I know there's going to be stipulations, especially on the unemployment side. However, I just want to throw this out there for those of us who have been working this entire time and struggling. I don't know if that's something you guys can fight for as well, because I've been working the entire time. And not getting anything extra except for what the government has sent, and then, of course, what the tribe has given throughout this past year. I feel like we almost should be the first priority versus the unemployed, since they're getting extra from the government every week or every month, whatever, however that stipulation is.
So just, just so you know-
Yes.
-the example that you're talking about-
Yes.
-that's also issued in the guidance-
Okay.
-for us to consider, too.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just tired of hearing about unemployment. I've been, I don't even know what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mike, if you've got any updates, we'll take them.
Real additional updates, we are going to have Quapaw, I guess.
Four days?
In China, first through the fourth. Registration, that's probably what everybody's really wanting to know about. Camper registration will be throughout the week. Times and dates are listed on the website. The second, they will be registering in the administration conference room. We got a request for Memorial Dinner that day in here, so. Rest of the days will be in the community building. Shouldn't be any reason why nobody can find a place not to register throughout the week. Other than that, it's staff is set, confirmed. The odds and ends were taken care of on the backside. If people want to place family pages, memorial pages, deadline for that will be the twenty-eighth of this month. You can send those to annapipestem@gmail.com.
Said May twenty-eighth.
Any businesses that want to add in the program, you can send them there as well. And if you've got hearts and crafts vendors that want spaces, they can go onto the tribal website and pull off the vendor applications, and they can contact me. Other than that, that's about it.
Any questions for Mike? All right, appreciate it. Okay, we're in open forum now. Anybody have any issues or business they'd like to bring in open forum, they're more than welcome to? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Gracie Good Eagle.
The elders committee did not meet on Thursday because of the funeral for Robert Whitebird the third. We are continuing our efforts of getting information together because we realize the need, the importance of keeping our Quapaw ways alive. And so we're still gathering information. In the meantime, we are also thinking ahead as far as upcoming events for us and hearing all the reports and all. Thinking in terms now of the upcoming election. We're just asking people to be kind to one another. There's, again, I think, a need there, again, along with keeping our Quapaw ways alive. We need to keep working on that, and so we're continuing to gather information. Along with what we're about to, we're very appreciative of what has come our way, the elders. One thing I would like to mention is the meals that we get through Title VI with the noon time meals that we get. Certainly, it's welcome, it really is very, very welcome. In addition to that, along with the meals that we have gone, sometimes we do get items that are given to our elders. And one item that I received, and as others did, was this humongous ham. And so I went to Rhonda and I said, who do we thank for this? I mean- I mean, here were boxes and boxes of these big hams. And so she told me at that time, she said, well, she said. Downstream had all of these hams and they were wondering what to do with them. And so, as I heard, it was thanks to to Kelly and Michelle that those came to us because. I mean, these were humongous hams, and so I was able to share. With family and with my neighbor and me, and it was really good ham, but to show, we want to say thank you. What's available to us through the Quapa Nation and anybody else that wants to give us something, we'll take it.
The only thing I want to say to that is that I apologize for those globes. I don't know if anybody's seen them, but they're like wooden globes, they're really not pretty, but I guess it's like a bar, they're hollow and it'll open up and. I don't really know what somebody would do with something like that in their house, you know, so I think everybody got one. So everybody got one.
This was one of those where you had to assemble the thing.
Got two.
That was a fancy thing, too. On a K.
Thank you. For those words.
I know I'm pretty excited about this, this is going to be. I don't think it's the first, because I think years past this has happened, but there's going to be, it's called Camp Quapa. It's for all the youth from ages eight to 18 years old. It's going to be June 22nd through the 25th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The registration is now open, there's going to be. Just as many things that we can get in and those that timeframe. To teach our youth, demonstrate to our youth our cultural and. Billy Bertram is the head of this and she's done a wonderful job, they're still looking for anyone that would like to volunteer. There's, or if you have, if you need more information, there's also a flyer and there's. Paperwork for anyone that's interested in attending for the youth. It's a summer camp and it's going, it's it's the week we can have before powwow starts, so if you know of any youth from the ages of eight to 18 years old that would like to participate. I think it's going to be a really fun week, and so please come see one of us or for sure call call Billy and her number is the 918. 238-3152, and I'm pretty sure the flyers have have started going out and they're, you'll see them around and also posted on the website. If you have any questions, just reach out to us, I'll be happy to help you out on that. Bridge the youth.
Yes, Barbara.
I wanted Lloyd to know that I volunteered him. I was asked to participate and I'm not going to be available, so I volunteered you, Lloyd, you can do it.
Good deal, I'm sure Lloyd appreciates that.
He was a part of making the history, so of course. I just want to go ahead and mention, let everybody know or remind you that our farmer's market is starting next, this Friday coming up. It has, it's in the middle of being revamped, it looks really, really good, I wish all of you could make make it out there and take a look at it. They are going to have fresh food, crafts, meat, you name it. They also have a seed library available for anybody to go get some seeds out there. And some of the seeds that they have are Quapa red corn, sunflowers, okra, tomatoes. Wildflowers, just a variety of stuff, so encourage you to go out there and get some seed packets as well. Oh, yeah. The hours change, too, it's going to be from two to six, but they're going to change the hours up this year, so. Let's just say the first one is going to be May 21st, May 21st from two to six, and I don't want to give you any false information, but it's all going to be online and I'm sure it's going to be on the Quapa post. The Quapa post is something else, I don't know if anybody else wants to elaborate on it, but it's a form of communication that we're trying to push out there through, you know, digital and print. They're trying to put all the hot news on there. So keep an eye on that as well. Accomplishments, activities, events, graduations. All of the above.
Yeah, let me go ahead, Henry.
Oh, hey, good idea, it's on Main Street in Quapa, right next to the environment environmental building. Mercantile is there now, too, so it's it's looking really good. I was, I was kind of shocked, I was like, ooh, this decor looks really good, I stopped in there yesterday for a second, so. Fresh on my mind.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of our graduates, both college. Train, whether it's college vocational training, high school, anybody that's had to endure. Having to go to school and have class attendance over the last year during a pandemic. It's, it's been an interesting time, so I just want to offer my congratulations, our congratulations to all of the graduates out there, so. Good job, and if you wish to announce, if you have a grandson, grand granddaughter or niece nephew. Whatever, any kind of relation that you want to. Make make sure they get out there and get their announcements to Quapa Post and all our social media and our newspaper as well, so. Any other questions, discussion?
Yes, sir.
I do have three questions from Zoom here, the first is for Mike Shawnee from Bobby Harris. He's wondering if there's anything for people who registered during the last full power for camp site.
I don't have any information on that, so you're going to have to take that up with, I guess, the administration office.
So just have them contact administration, Dawn or Steva.
All right, the next question is, they're wondering if you know on hand if what the fee for memorial page is. He's looking up for you guys, I have a Sarah who is wanting to know who all the contributors for the articles of the Quapa post are.
Contributors, you know, we Johnny Rogers is the one, I don't even know if we'd want to call him an editor in chief. But he's the one spearheading that that initiative. I mean, we all contribute to it in a sense. Any any data that that we have that we can put on there. Departments that coming from our tribal government side or even on the business side. So any directors that are responsible for their own departments, they're all contributing. And I think that there is talks of, because Johnny Rogers is only one person, he's a pretty busy individual. With all of the the our business entities, they're looking at having two staff riders. For additional employees to the to the Quapa post, too. So that'll be coming in the weeks to months to come.
And then I have Robin Olson wants to congratulate Juita Smith for 25 years of service.
Yeah, I keep waiting for an invite to some party. 25 years is a big thing, still waiting on my invite, and I'm sure she is too, is she in the audience? No, okay, well, that's all right, we won't hold that against her. Okay, there's an employee appreciation for June the 11th, so all tribal employees, please mark your calendars, June 11th. That's something that we've been wanting to do since, well, since the beginning of the year, even previous and COVID kind of. Kept us from doing that, but now that things are opening up, we're gonna, we're going to start doing those more frequently. And I'm sure that we will definitely honor Juita there, if she comes, hopefully she's there. And then going back to your question on program, powwow, powwow program?
Yeah, okay, it's looking like a full page ad, black and white is a 150 in color, it's 225 for your pages. And it goes down half page, 125, black and white, 150 color. Quarter page is 100. With colors 125. And I don't think you want a business card size one, if you're trying to memorial page, it'd be awfully small.
We'll definitely take that information and make sure it's available for everyone after today's meeting as well.
Yeah, it is, like I said, it is under the culture tab on the website. Under. Powwow and. Underneath the vendors, there's the advertising, the powwow program book, and it's all listed there, and they have to open up the PDF for the price list.
Okay. All right, thanks for the info. Any other thing from Zoom? All right, we're good there on Zoom, anybody else in attendance today physically, any questions? Yes. There, there is a question in the audience about updating our phones and our directories, sounds like an IT thing to me.
It is.
We'll, we'll, we'll make those changes as best we can, keep them up to date. Thank you. Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right, but we're going to move out of open forum and. J O, you mind closing us out in prayer?
Bear with me for one second, please, thank you. Hohokon the Creator would come to you here again. It's time, dear Lord, just asking for your strength and guidance here that you continue to walk with us. Continue to bless us with. All the things in life that you provide with us for us, dear Lord, we're just grateful for. The things that you do for us, we couldn't do without you, we are just thankful for this day, for that sunrise this morning, it's raining. As that you continue to be with our mourners, our sick, those who are hurting and. Those who are fighting depression. Alcohol abuse, drug abuse, and they're all still. Needed in this life here, dear Lord, we just want them to be able to stand up, stand up tall, dear Lord, we're just grateful for. All things in life, and we just want to thank you for today, in Jesus Christ's name I pray.
Move to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, have a second. Have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, okay, we adjourn.